All right, we're going to go ahead and get started. How everybody doing today? Everybody having a good Thanksgiving? All right, so we'll go ahead and call the Facility of Operations meeting into order. Um, I know Director Green was saying he might try to get here on Zoom. Um, so he can make it that way. Uh, we'll just start out with introductions. Um, and we'll start to my right over in the corner.
Hi, I'm Terry Proctor, Communications Department, and with me today is.
Frank Duhlow, Official Learning.
I am Liz Lawrence, the District's Contracted General Counsel.
Dan Young, Chief Operating Officer.
Dana White, Director for Planning and Real Estate.
Marina Creswell, Senior Director of the Office of Modernization.
Amy Constan, Board Member.
Gary Hollins, Board Member.
Jimmy Life, Board Repetisher and.
Shandra Robinson, Ledger.
Steven from Senior PM and OSM.
Keeselak, Project Manager, Jefferson Modernization.
Hannah Horn, Project Manager, OSM, Jefferson Modernization.
Roseanne Hall, Board Manager.
Kira Bradshaw, Regular Assistant.
Kat Davis, Climate Justice Advisor.
Darren Lee, Director of Construction, Office of School Modernization.
I'm Also, Director of Construction, Office of School Modernization.
All right, and we had a couple people tell me. Is he introduce yourself?
Okay, uh, I'm Nathaniel Hamblin, uh, I'm part of the Urban League of Portlanders, and I'm visiting just to see what you guys have to talk about.
All right, thank you, welcome.
I'm Rosie Foyer, Treasurer of the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. PTA.
All right, thank you, welcome. Okay, so we got three items on our agenda today. So Dan, I wanted to see if we can switch some stuff around, is that okay?
I think so.
Okay.
I have to, well, I can participate. How you want to do?
Well, I want to move, because I want to make sure that the Jefferson Modernization stuff gets enough time, but we didn't get a lot of time last time. So I want to go ahead and try to move the order, move Benson up first, that get through Tubman piece, and then that way we can still have the rest of the time for Jeff. Is that okay with everyone?
We can be flexible.
Okay. So go ahead and kick off.
All right, we're going to start with the Benson topic. Uh, we don't have a presentation for the Benson topic in packets. Um, you should have a memo. Uh, we'll save all the presentations for later. Uh, you should have a memo that outlines how the Benson Modernization project aligns with the District's Climate Crisis Response Policy, uh, and how that project helps further the goals of that policy. So, um, we're just, we got staff here to answer any questions that the committee might have.
I just, I commented on this before, but I thought that was, I really appreciated how thorough that memo was and, um, just look forward to getting the information, I guess, within the next month or so, uh, that's sort of our greenhouse gas inventory that will allow us to start our prioritization of projects. Is that right by the end of the year?
Yeah, the greenhouse gas, uh, emissions analysis, we should have that document by the end of December. Uh, then that will, that will inform us kind of where our biggest emitters are and give us some information about what would be the highest return on investment prior, or projects that, that reduce our emissions so we can hit our 2023, 2024 to go. So we'll need, once we get that down, we'll need some time to do some analysis of what the, what the best projects are going to be. We'll have one of the sequence there, uh, but that should be coming into.
All right. Hey, man, any other questions?
So I have to comment, um, I really appreciate the sort of detailing out each of the components um, of the Benson project that are anticipated to have a carbon footprint and the approach and appreciate the complexity of the, um, efficiency of all quarters, what, um, the uncertainty and the complexity, um, of transitioning that to electricity. Um, so really thank you for detailing it out. One of the questions I had, and I also appreciate this, and I ran into Kat um, part of the meeting and getting this sent out to the Climate Crisis, um, Community Committee, just so they could see it all as long as they have a lot of questions. And I think this will answer some of them. The question I had that relates to this is just as, as we think about our overall goals, we'll have the inventory, but my understanding, at least based on the question from earlier, is that, um, PBS was anticipated that the carbon footprint from the new Benson building wouldn't be, um, we wouldn't have that information until the building was actually operational. And the, some questions that came up from some members of the Climate Committee was like, is, is it possible to, to have that modeled, I mean, to at least project, to have some estimate of what that would be before we actually, you know, open the building? So that, so you can kind of see each of these big buckets and the work that you all have done. Again, I really appreciate this because I think it gives us a roadmap of what's, I guess, the low hanging fruit, what's possible and what's not, or maybe longer term. But also looking at some, just getting, being able to put a marker down on.
Yeah. Yeah, I think you're seeing a question that the, the memo's got some, some data about anticipated EUI numbers, but not the greenhouse gas emissions. So I will look at Aaron Pressburg and see if you can answer that question, the detailed question.
You're right, you don't have, you don't have the actual numbers until it's worth of operations at Benson. But you can, can look into the EUI numbers, um, the energy use, the energy model addicted, and convert that into potential emissions. It's going to be a pretty wild guess, but it will be estimated.
We can also look at the performance of our modernized buildings that have some of the same components that we're having Benson.
I mean, I think it does, the transparency, I appreciate that, just at least getting some numbers. Because, so for example, if the, um, the burners in the science labs, um, which is in here, there's a replacement for, that's a replacement that works at this point in time. But it may be such a small number that like, um, we should maybe take it off the table as a like point of community conversation and really focus on where the larger emissions come from and, you know, how we work through that versus having conversations and discussion about something that's maybe not a significant factor.
Yeah, I, I think that's totally fair, you know, with, with the analysis, you know, we're going to get this data about, um, what our emissions are across the district. And we don't want to have any gaps in there, but we don't have some sort of data to say, even if they're estimated, here's, here's, you know, where we think those emissions are. We'll have, you know, more definitive data in a year, but it can kind of, I think what I'm saying is, where is that going to fall in the level of priority? So if we can estimate it and we can see it falls at the bottom or somewhere in the middle, that's better than nothing. And I think that's doable for us, we can, we can estimate.
Great, that'd be super helpful.
Yeah.
I was just going to say thank you, the team that put together the memo.
Yeah, so I just wanted to really appreciate the layout of the stuff that we are doing in light of the new climate, uh, policy that we have. Um, and it's something, a lot of that stuff is on page four, stuff that we are trying to do between, um, in the, in the time, in the timeframe. Um, so, but then, any public comments? So we, I want to address something too, that we got a, uh, email, um, from the, uh, Monoma County Democrats from the Chair and, I mean, Action Team, um, asking to cease the construction of Benson, um, to perform independent audits. So I, I would not recommend that at all. Um, I think the, when we look at being student-centered, I think that would really harm our students in the long run versus looking at, you know, some minor stuff that we could do under the constraints that we have. Look at the estimates, even if we decided to stop and redo it, we got to have the money to stop and redo it with. Um, and we already in a, you only have finite resources already. Uh, and so I just wanted to make sure I respond to that, that I will not be recommending. And I don't think any of us would be wanting to recommend, um, to cease construction, especially when our team is looking at things that we can do now, um, to help with the climate justice, um, policy that we have.
I do, I'm glad you brought that up because I, I do think it's really important for us to communicate back to some of the entities that have communicated with us about this because there has been a lot of misinformation distributed in the community. And I think some of the information here could be really helpful. I've talked to people with a couple of the environmental groups that signed on to a letter that we previously received that had no idea of the context of the situation and in fact had been misinformed about several elements of it. So I think it's important for us to, you know, reach out with facts about what we're doing, what we have been doing with our modernization programs all along, and how much more aggressive we're going to be now that we have a, a policy in place. But I don't want to leave all those sort of perceptions and, and inquiries hanging. So I don't know who's, I don't know who, you can maybe follow up on that, Roseanne. Primarily like this, and then we had a letter that had like 12 signers.
Yeah.
Gary, could you share that? It was in our email.
Yeah, it just came like an hour ago or something, so.
Okay, would you just share that with the rest of us so we have?
Okay. All right, any other questions, comments, concerns around this?
I just want to publicly appreciate the command staff's work on the added sustainability efforts. I think they heard carefully, uh, a lot of the added feedback. I think there's a lot of feedback about this project generally, but just taking it a step further, you know, staying on track for lead goal. But I think everybody's put in their best effort to really have it bottle the spirit of our goals and our policies. So it doesn't get there 100%, but I think there's a lot of good stuff. So just stay with this team, uh, on this project.
Yeah. All right, so.
There's a quick question.
Yes.
Uh, you guys were referencing a memo, and I know I came late, is there, uh, where can I find this memo or?
Publicly posted.
Posted. If you look at our website for the materials for this meeting, Facility and Operations, you'll see it there.
All right, so we're going to put that to bed and so we can move on. So if anyone else, if the public or anybody else that has some other issues with Benson, um, please use that time for other causes that you might want to advocate for, um, because we need to move on with that, so. All right, let's go to the next one.
Okay, the next one is, uh, update on the Harry Tubman Middle School relocation. This will be a fairly, uh, quick update, um, as a follow-up to the one we did, I guess, last month. Uh, so we're going to walk through real quickly what are the current options that we are analyzing and where we are with current steps. Dana White's going to walk us through.
Sure, so next slide there, there's the agenda. We're going to talk about the options. So the current options that we have on the table are BESC. I know not those popular, but meets the criteria. Uh, the South Lot at Jefferson High School and then a potential co-location site and the South Lot. So those are the three that meet enough of the criteria for us at this point to be, to be, continue to be considered. So, uh, BESC certainly, um, I think you've all seen this before. We have lots of property here, you know, we're a mile from the existing school. Um, we could do pretty much anything we wanted to. I know there's a whole host of other issues that come with that, but that is one, one option that's still on the table and because it beats all the criteria that we've laid out. The Jefferson South Lot, um, is the two acre lot that's to the south. This is a really difficult site for talent. Um, if you, it's, the current Tubman sits on three acres, so this is 3% smaller than what they've currently got. It would require probably a fourth story building and it would be very challenged to get natural light into a lot of it. So it is a, a tough site to fit a middle school on.
It's also currently programmed for the athletic uses for the Jefferson Modernization.
Right, so it would, it would have an impact on, on the Jefferson Modernization as well. So, and then the Humboldt site with the South Lot, co-location with Kairos. There's ongoing dialogue, um, Dan and Jonathan are having some dialogue with Kairos about, in very early days, I think, about what that might look like, what would that mean, things like that. So no, no drawings on paper or nothing, nothing of that sort at this point. So that's, that's where we, that is where.
But our original timeline for, um, landing site for Tubman was by a dawn. That, that ship sailed, well, that's where it's not leaving us.
So we will need to have a swing site for Tubman, um, which hasn't been decided on, but likely we can finish, closes, empty building that we have, not in the catchment area, uh, but enlarged. So that's, that's going to require some dialogue about where's the right place to.
Have we received the money from the state yet, 121?
There is, have we received the money from the state yet?
I, I believe so, but I'm not in charge of the money and how to account for it. So I know the agreement was signed and I think the money arrived, but I haven't, I didn't actually. I guess one of, a concern I would have, um, is we have three sites, one's not recommended and one that we're about ready to make the longer option, uh, with the Jefferson Master Plan. So that leaves us two sites, um, but two sites that we've seen after over a year of conversation, pretty far still from actually making them viable. And so I'm, I'm wondering what is the timeline for, because a concern I have is they, they go to a swing site and then the, you know, the urgency disappears and, um, especially since we made the pitch to the state that we needed a site. I guess I'm, I'm concerned that there's not.
How do we keep that on?
We don't have a timeline of like, hey, we need to like stick a decision by X number of dates. And so I guess, I don't know who's, the answer, but it seems like we, we need that and it's going to be important for our community today.
We do, our target of, uh, uh, finding the next location by April. So that is our goal and, and we design the community engagement around that target. Uh, obviously challenging sites and obviously lots of conversations and decisions and clarity need to come into place for that to happen. So that's what our goals, that, you know, so that's, that's our target and that's what's keeping the motivation there. Uh, but we know the sooner, depending on the site, the duration of when it takes to move students in there is variable. Um, so we definitely know that the sooner we can make the decision, you know, the sooner we'll be able to act and that will benefit the students. So, uh, the concern is real and certainly understand that, um, but they are, there are some challenging sites and, um, we're pursuing all of them to see which ones are available.
So if you land a site in April, um, what, what's the target for actually moving into a new, new school?
It, it will really depend on what that final site is. Um, you know, the BESC site would have a much longer timeline than potentially a co-location option. Uh, but the co-location option could have some complexities as well, uh, about, because if it's, there's, you know, an active school already at Kairos, if that's the co-location option. There's, there's a lot of variables there, so we don't know. We don't want to move the students out in 2026, that's when the, the viaduct construction immediately adjacent to Tubman begins and that's when you see the highest environmental impact. So we want to move them out of there. Our hope is still kind of things go as smooth as possible, maybe 2027, it's definitely be in there one year. But again, there's a lot of variables.
And just, I mean, Superintendent, maybe you want to speak to this, but even though we don't have a detailed timeline, like there's huge urgency in our conversations that we're having right now with Kairos and both sides recognize that. Um, because also, once we start final design for Jefferson, um, that's going to become a really important wedge as well. So I, I don't, I don't want to leave an impression that we're sort of loosely muddling around on that. Like we're pursuing that as.
Yeah, I think it's fair to say we're all committed to making sure that the Tubman communities, you know, temporary swing relocation is kept as minimal as possible. I think you're going to see a lot of activity, uh, on a couple of city blocks potentially, uh, with Jefferson and depending on the decisions here, uh, you see that things are in motion and we just need the timeline to, to build it all out. Um, but I, I think you're seeing sort of where the path forward seems to be landing. So unless we make a different decision, then that changes things.
Did you just go back to the funds again from the state, from a just financial standpoint? That's in some restricted account that, um, very restricted.
We're not using it for chellows and products.
I just want to make sure because it's like, there were a lot of representations made to the legislature on moving those students.
Yeah.
No reporting requirements, I believe, as we, out of my spend.
Can you share that with the board?
Sure. Yep.
I mean, not now, but just as a follow-up.
The committee can expect some transparency.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely, and there is a great sense of urgency.
All right, any other questions, comments, public comments?
Yes. Hi, um, yeah, I'm Rosie from the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. PTA. Unfortunately Tiffany and Tyler couldn't make it tonight, so I'm here representing. But, um, we've been in discussions with the, uh, other theater school PTAs and so far we've heard back from Boise, Humboldt, and also Irvington Elementary. And we're still waiting to hear back from Saban, but none of us want to see the, none of the parents, these schools want to see Tubman in this location at PNC.
Nobody does, nobody.
Yeah, so I just, I mean, I'm not sure why it's still an option. None of, you know, parents of the students that will be attending that school don't want to see it. So that's, that's my statement.
Personally, we're in agreeance.
Yeah, that's great, that's great. You know, I don't, I would, I guess we would like to see it taken off the table.
Me too.
Removed from that document. So we don't have to talk about it and spend resources looking into it.
So Dan, can we take that off, say, I mean, would the colleagues agree?
I mean, the sequences that we've been going through is provide information, receive public comment. We don't have our, our community engagement team here today. I don't think they would disagree with the colleagues. And then feedback from the directors of what are viable sites and what are not viable sites.
Yeah, I, I think it would be a safe bet to take the BESC off, move that one. Even from the community engagement stuff that I went to, no one said, yes, that would be a great, good idea. They, they had my zero votes, so I think that'd be safe to take.
So I'm confused then, then why would, why would that take us till April to choose a site? Because essentially at the end of this.
Well, no, that's, that's just the, that's just the timeline, we could do it before then. That's just kind of like the deadline.
Well, I guess, just a clarification, then it's not so much a site selection, it's like a more of a negoti, a negotiation. Because if, if Jefferson's going to come off at the next board meeting, the South Lot, then, and then BESC comes off here, then there's really like one potential viable site. So it's more not as, it's not a site selection, it's a negotiation about what that might look like.
But we can't presuppose the outcome of that negotiation, so we can't eliminate the other alternatives.
But that's what we're talking about doing.
Well, in, I mean, in practicality, what we've seen is some sites come off and come back on, come off and come back on multiple times. And, and, you know, if we start to see clear path towards, towards one option, that's great. I mean, that's really what we want to funnel down to, but ultimately, that site has to work, it has to be viable. And if ultimately that, if we're down to one site and that's not viable, then we have to look at additional options. Will those be previous options or new options? We're, we're definitely still interested in creative solutions that are out there. Um, because this has been a big challenge to find what is that, that right site for the Tubman students.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? All right, let's move on to the Jeff.
We got the great team here.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll just do a quick intro. So we appreciate the time tonight to, again, present this, uh, exciting and transformative project. Uh, I think we all know that we have a very aggressive schedule, uh, for us to hit our first phase completion target of 2026 and having students into Phase One by 2026. A lot of milestones that we need to hit before then, uh, master plan approval, uh, land use approval, uh, design permitting, uh, and, and much more. So three weeks ago, the team provided a presentation, a detailed presentation about the community engagement, stakeholder engagement to date. Uh, and tonight we're going to give a preview of the comprehensive master plan document that will be in front of the board for approval on December. So with that, I will turn it over to, we'll turn it over to Marina Creswell or?
Actually, I'm going to turn it over to the team. I already wanted to add that the materials that you're seeing tonight are, um, essentially draft version and what you will see on the 13th, so you should not expect to see significant changes in December. Um, we did not provide a draft of the plan itself, we provided you just the presentation. We're still finishing the, the planning documents and that's what we heading to the board office tomorrow.
Can I, before you start, Marina, two things, what, what are you looking for from us here? And then specifically at the board meeting, what the board is, is the comprehensive is with the board, we'll be providing the board meeting, the drafts that we have for next.
You will receive materials that are filed during the board.
And then what do you want from today?
Uh, we were asked to come tonight to, to provide a preview so that it wasn't fresh, um, when we arrived at the December board meeting.
But we're not, um, we're not forwarding a recommendation from the Facilities and Operations Committee for board adoption. Um, I think that would, that's our usual process with our board committees.
That is the usual process. So. I, Karen, you would?
No, I mean, we can, we can do that. I mean, yeah, that's fine, we can, we can recommend it just, I mean, once we get to the, after the presentation.
Basically all of these is how we all go.
Keep it simple, I mean, Eric, and to put it out there, so we did invite every, all, all the board members to come to this meeting, so they did have opportunity to see this before the December 13th meeting. So I'm going to just take that as they're looking at this stuff on their own, so that way they can be informed when we get to the, um, December 13th meeting. All right.
Okay, so I'm going to turn it over to the Jefferson team. Alrighty, we're going to start off with our landing acknowledgement and statement. At PPS, we strive to strengthen our relationships with the Native community and Native nations. Simple of this commitment is land acknowledgement. These statements bring visibility to the first peoples of our collective home. The statement is meant to provide information and context while also encouraging all of us to reflect on our current day relationship with Native people and Native experiences. We acknowledge that we live, work, and play on the traditional land of Chinook, Clackamas, Kalpuya, Monoma, Osceau, Kalpamet, Tawantin, Waukeah. We also know that many other tribes made their homes along the Colombian and Wamang rivers. We honor their history and acknowledge the sacrifices that they made. Let us also acknowledge the robust present day federally recognized tribes of this area, the Grand Ronde, Celest, and Callets. In addition, I would like to acknowledge the Chinook Nation, who has been seeking federal recognition for many years. The urban Indian community is made up of tribal diversity that originates from around the country, representing 400 tribes. The urban Indian community has a vivid history, made up of people whose journeys brought them to Portland by ways of forced displacement and law and justice. Next slide. Today, these tribes and communities celebrate their heritage, showing resilience and tenacity that was greatly admired by their ancestors. Within Portland Public Schools today, we serve students and families representing more than 150 different tribal nations within our education system. It is our obligation to teach accurate information, past and present, about the negative impact of colonization on our students, all students today, and make visible the multitude of Native families and many diversities in Native communities and families are living in the present. We encourage every person to reflect on their own history, understand the history of colonization and genocide, and support Indigenous sovereignty, priorities, and actions. This acknowledgement is one step that we can take to improve our support of Indigenous communities in this area. In addition to acknowledging the lands and those that have been here since time began, we must also remember our stolen siblings from Africa, whose labor built the vast wealth of this country. These two communities and the atrocities committed against them are intrinsically intertwined due to our existence within a white supremacist world. Everything we have is due to stolen lands and stolen labor and every system and institution that impacts our lives is built upon this legacy. It is our job to speak that. It is our job to speak that truth into spaces so that we can begin to heal. Next slide.
Thank you, Keisha, for having us here this evening. Want to give you a quick overview of our agenda. So we'll be going over really the extensive community engagement and feedback from the past. We'll be drilling in in a lot of detail, actually, on the recommended concepts that you'll be able to learn about where we landed. Looking at, obviously, the specific Jefferson project program compared to the typical high school S P X. Kind of showing you schedule in several different formats, so you kind of understand where we're going. And then a brief discussion of project cost, and then going into program detail. Next slide. So this initial slide is really our effort to kind of illustrate, initially for the community that we've been working with, how the engagement and design process kind of interact. So initially, you know, we got questions from the community about how all of this works, in particular from the CPC, the Comprehensive Planning Committee, and how their role is related to the planning and design process. So this diagram really kind of breaks it up into, on the left-hand side, the community engagement, on the right-hand side, stakeholder engagement, and then kind of the planning process down, planning and design process down the center. So it breaks it each up into the who, how, and the what. And so the who is kind of all the individuals and groups that participate. The how is kind of how they participate, and the what is kind of the level of feedback they provide. So I won't go into too much detail, but just as an example, in the upper left-hand corner, the CPC and ultimately the DAG, which is our community engagement group, will provide pretty detailed feedback into the process. Both they've done that through the planning process and then through into design. But in some cases where we're just kind of having public events, as an example, it's really just kind of a higher level of kind of comments and kind of feedback. So we wanted to kind of use this as kind of a first pass of showing how, how those different community groups and stakeholders engage with the process. Go to the next. So we, we always want to come up with more ways to show stakeholder engagement. So this is another graphic that actually BORA created, really a great way to represent really more of the key stakeholder groups. So you can see it broken up into the yellow Jefferson stakeholders, blue PPS stakeholders, in red, public engagement overall, and then in gray, the regulatory agencies. So to kind of just give you a summary of how all of that has worked up to, up till now during the planning process, we've reached out to multiple stakeholders, different types of groups, obviously Jefferson High School, community members such as alumni, incoming families, neighbors, school partners, regulatory agencies that will actually have some say in what, what is actually built. And then certainly internal PPS stakeholders, such as district leaders across all departments, board members, the CBSC leadership, and then as we had last night, the bond accountability committee. So it really, if you have a chance to look at the, it's a little too small to see on the screen, but all of the kind of text, small text kind of to the side and kind of interspersed is all the different groups, individuals, events, and information that was shared through these different stakeholders. Go to the next slide. And then more specifically, working closely with the Comprehensive Planning Committee, the effort, as we've done on past modernizations, was really to come up with a mission statement and guiding principles that would kind of guide the planning process going forward. So I won't actually read the mission statement, but I just wanted to kind of focus on how it was this kind of collaboratively created statement by the CPC. But I did want to go through the specifics of the guiding principles, because these really tie to kind of a lot of the goals that we're seeking out on the project. So these really covered major areas, including the process, the cultural experience in the school program. So the first one that we kind of collaboratively came up with, with the CPC was design for equity and justice. And really, this was focusing on using the lens of design justice to center Black and Brown communities. In terms of the next one, resiliency and equity of investment, that was a focus on the most disproportionately impacted communities and looking at an equity or equitable investments in this community. In terms of transparency and decision-making, it was really providing equitable access to those most directly impacted. And really, I think what we're trying to do throughout the process is provide transparent and accountable communication. In terms of design and construction experience, certainly focusing on equity, teamwork, collaboration, and trust. And then the, the next one, heritage and represented, representation, centering Jefferson in its community and reflecting its rich Black history. And really, actually even further than that, focusing on creating inspirational, welcoming, and accessible spaces and experiences. And then finally, in terms of the overall learning experience, really supporting the unique Jefferson educational and program experiences. So these are not really kind of carved in stone. They're intended to be continuous, kind of this live document and this live guiding principles as we continue into design. Good, the next slide, please.
Quick, quick question.
Oh, yeah, sure.
So during the community engagement pieces and conversations, and this is the one that keeps coming up with me, is the fact that when during these conversations, we have a conversation of who we're building this for. And what are those, what are those conversations like?
Can take a stab there. So Collocate has been doing a lot of our community outreach out in the neighborhood. We've also obviously had a lot of different events with the CPC and town halls and open houses. But what Collocate has been doing is they have people out in the community who are kind of talking one-on-one with people. And, and you're right, it has been a question that's come up a bunch of times, like, it's, if it's not being built for us, because our kids are already grown and gone, and people live in the numbers, you know, what is it for? And I think there's been a recognition that the neighborhood has changed, it will continue to change. But the fact is that the overall form of the original 1909 building and sort of the, the placement of buildings on the campus is what people understand to be part of the community and part of Jefferson. So it almost doesn't matter who's inside of the building, if the building still allows a community company to be a part of it through all of the different partnerships that are there. And so the conversations those started out with, if this isn't for us, then who is it for? It was still really important for community members to be able to save something that they had a memory of and be able to kind of pass that on to further generations and imagine people coming back to the neighborhood. And so that's really what we got through the sort of really fine-grained outreach that was done by Collocate and sort of individual community design organizers out there, knocking on doors and talking to everyone they know.
I would say, I would, I have kind of two takeaways from the conversations that we had about who is it for. I mean, one is kind of more broadly, like, how can we influence other levers to try to use this modernization as a way to bring Black students back to Jefferson? And that involves partnerships with housing agencies and our own policies around inter-district transfers and all that kind of more global stuff. Because so much of what you see here on the piece about history and heritage is about the legacy as our largely Black high school. So a lot of conversations about how could we work within a larger ecosystem to preserve and nurture that as we move forward? And then the other one is much more brass tacks in terms of who are we building this for? Which is, we have 600 students there now, and we're building a building for 1,700 students that has no defined geographic boundaries. So that's on us, that's our work, actually, as a board, as a district and a board, to, you know, look at our enrollment balancing and our boundary process. And that work is coming at us fast, and it hasn't been initiated yet, other than the recognition that it has to happen. But that's kind of just a big if laying, laying out there. Who, who's going to populate this building, and where are they going to come from? And how are we going to get to that decision?
And also maybe how you make a place for kids of students who went to Jeff a long time ago or something, right?
Absolutely.
Who are out in the numbers or whatever.
Right, to return.
And they're like, oh, well, you know, now Jeff is a, is an even better place to be than it was before, right? So how can I come back in here if I'm not in front?
Thank you.
That's a lot.
Yeah.
With all that being said, about engagement, we have, through Collocate, and in collaboration with their CDOs, the engagement team has participated in over 600 stakeholder discussions. And I think this says 700 right now, but I think the updated number is now 900 comments that they've logged and tracked. And their focus is really to have conversations with what they call priority users, you know, the folks that she was just discussing. People have been historically marginalized from the traditional routes of our processes to really get at these things that you're talking about, to really hearing from some of the on-the-ground grassroots feelings within the community. And to answer also some of your question, I've been reflecting a lot, because I just got back from Atlanta. And this is not necessarily in a presentation, but I went to Spellman, and, but I went to a school that was more like, like, like Oswego. And when I went to Spellman, it was like going home to a place that I hadn't known that I had been missing, right? And so how do we create a place for kids who have moved away, or families that have moved away, but this is still home for those families? That's, you know, if we can create something like that, then we've succeeded. And for, for Jeff, for this project, that means centering Black students and families with roots in Albina and multi-generational connections to Jeff. And we're all still starting to speak, not starting, they have been speaking with, with Latin and Indigenous students and other communities and culture, communities of color and culture, rather than focusing solely on, on folks who are geographically close to the school. And the goal is to shift the established processes as I mentioned before, so that power is distributed more equitably across the priority stakeholder community, creating more space for folks who've been left out of the process. Looking forward into the next phase, Collocate, Collocate will be co-facilitating, facilitating a design foundations class at Jefferson. There'll be in-class co-teaching with staff there in the third quarter, and there we have a.
Oh, that's cool, so before, well, as design gets started.
As, mhm.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Yeah. And hosting sessions with SEI and SUN and Latina Network students, and ideally their families as well, and producing communication materials with students so that the feedback and information sharing is more continuous, so that we're getting the information out.
Have we ever done that before? I mean, we have our, our, yeah, during construction, that's so great.
Sorry, enjoy the silence.
Next slide. This slide shows a small sampling of the 900-plus comments mentioned previously. And these are words of students, alumni, family members, teachers, staff, theater school families, all of which are transcribed and tagged, as I mentioned before. And then they're categorized based on narratives and themes that emerge over time. The next slide will show how the comments have yielded specific narratives and stories that reflects people's experiences, concerns, questions, and visions for the future. Each narrative then breaks down into more specific themes with implications for spatial design, programming, and policies impacting people's experiences with Jeff and the systems at rest. Through the gathering of the community input, Collocate synthesized the info into narrative themes centered around those most impacted by the project, including the concerns, considerations, and experiences, also looking for opportunities where folks experience joy and were most excited about. These broke down into trust, identity, cultural belonging, safety, security, and wellness, access, flexibility, and change, resources, delight, and embracing the outdoors. Under trust, one of the things that they often say in meetings, because the pace of this project has been very spelt, I would say. It's moving. And so they always talk about design moves at the speed of trust. And so as we entered this project, we, we recognized going in that there was a trust deficit in the community. And so just going in knowing that we needed to do some, just be really intentional about the work that we were doing and to garner trust in this process so that people want to come to our events, that people want to come and be engaged in the, in the work that we're doing, so that we can hear their voices and know that the things that they're saying are being taken into consideration. You know, a lot of times people go into meetings and they're like, oh, are they really going to listen to me anyway? Or they're not going to come because they don't think they're going to listen. But we've seen the, the folks start to come, you know, from the first meeting to the last meeting, the engagement has increased over time. Identity, cultural, culture, and belonging, just that we've heard time and again that Jeff is the cultural institution to Black and Brown communities and that, that there's a need to make it a welcoming and resourceful and empowering space. Under safety, security, and wellness, not just the, you know, we want to, of course, make it a safe and secure environment, but also to have the focus on physical and mental health as well. For access, importance of universal and access design, but also making it a welcoming environment. Under flexibility and change, allowing for dynamic use and how, you know, thinking about the future as well. And under resources, include both educational and social, cultural resources. What you were speaking to about financial institutions, there was an event that Collocate was at where Collocate had a table, the library had a table, but there was also a financial institution there talking about loans in the community for housing. So having all of those opportunities present. And then designing for wonder and inspiration and delight. We want people to, you know, when you walk into a space, you want to feel welcome and feel joy when you're in those spaces. And embracing the outdoors, Keisha will speak to this later. You know, there's lots of studies that talk about access to natural light and access to the outdoors, and we've heard those, that a lot as well. And Collocate will produce an implications report that details a specific decision point and process recommended based on the engagement. And it's a living document and will change over time.
Excellent.
Thank you. So ultimately, all of that, that feedback through multiple different channels and in kind of a lot of detail led to the recommended option, which is to retain the 1909 building. And we're going to get into more detail, and you'll see all the diagrams and so forth in just a moment. But this is kind of, this was sort of an initial survey poll that we did based on some of the earlier scenarios, earlier options. And even through that survey poll, again, just another channel, you know, we really received feedback that, from that survey, that retaining the 1909 building in particular was an overwhelming theme of that feedback. So that's something that, that will become, you know, obviously apparent as we, we begin to present the actual site scenario. But the other part that we wanted to kind of tie into this, because we're going to start to talk about different factors that influence a project, is that Jefferson, Jefferson High School, as you may or may not know, happens to fall within the Piedmont Conservation District, and it's considered a contributing resource within that district. And so, as you can imagine, as we showed in those early slides in terms of different stakeholder impact, city has a lot of influence about what actually happens on the project. However, their feedback has really been in support of keeping that existing 1909 building. So I think we, we found this sort of happy kind of coalescing around the 1909 building in particular. Good, the next.
Or another way of saying that would be the converse, which is that their feedback has been, they've. which is that their feedback has been they would likely make it very difficult to get rid of that 1909 building.
Like, unless there was broad community support.
Yeah.
It could be very high risk.
Yeah.
So these are actually just some baseline kind of conditions that we also wanted to share, just to kind of as a reminder because it'll kind of get you grounded if, for people that are less familiar with the existing Jefferson, these diagrams really show the complexity of the existing Jefferson High School, including the building additions, seismic risks, and accessibility issues. So the upper left-hand corner is really diagram in blue there that is really about all the building additions, which I'm sure everyone is familiar with just looking at it. But really, those additions range in age from the original 1909 building to the 1968 auto shop. But the additions in the 1950s in particular, with those additions, many of the details of the original 1909 building were lost. In terms of seismic risk, again, that's kind of upper right-hand corner image in orange. This shows the degree of seismic deficiencies throughout those additions in the original building, where the darker orange colors show where we would require the most seismic upgrades on the project. And then finally, the lower left-hand corner in red tries to highlight accessibility issues. So while the original 1909 building there in gray actually has a pretty good layout overall with all the building additions, it really created internal accessibility issues. There are ramps, path levels, odd steps were constructed to stitch together various parts of the building. And it really created a situation where it's very hard to navigate. And for obvious reasons, it's also very, much of it is not ADA or universally accessible. So that's kind of putting all the existing conditions together.
So, question, can we just go back to that slide? So when you say that the city had a point of view on the 1909 building, is it just that one structure or do they consider the whole thing? Like.
Yeah, and I'll let others who have a little bit more depth of knowledge maybe talk about the different levels of historic significance.
I think 1909 is definitely the most prominent building on the site and the one that's landmarked as really key. The other one is the 1928 gym building, which is at the center.
In the deepest brown.
Yeah, the deepest brown one. That's another one that they are interested in and wondering about how we will look at that in terms of design, and we've been studying that for quite a while. The issue with it is that it's at the center of the site, which makes it really difficult to work around and create a cohesive building around it. So we are going to talk to the Landmark City Group and discuss sort of why that is not our recommended solution.
This is interesting because this has it in the lightest color. But what I had heard the feedback from landmarks was that it was also like very high seismic risk and would take a lot of retrofitting in order to make it.
It's not in the lightest color. It is actually in the brown and the darkest color. So it is, it has a significant amount of seismic work that was not intuible. Yeah. So there is many reasons.
Are you looking at 1928?
Yep, yeah.
Oh, I was looking at 1964.
No, 19, yeah, the 1928 gym.
Lot of options.
There's a lot of dates.
So it seems just for clarity with the community that if we're going to talk about the 1909 building, we know exactly what that means so that, because everybody may have a different definition of like what they think we're preserving and if that's the recommendation. So if it's the 1909 plus 28 plus 52 or whatever, that we have some way to identify that we're really clear, like that's what we're keeping.
Yes. We've been really clear about using the date because there's so much complexity to talking about the building and really making that clear in our actions.
So when I, okay, so just to test that, when you say 1909, then I look at this, it's just like, there's just one building that needs, that is like the center of what we're preserving and everything else can go.
Yeah, that's right.
That's right.
Including the gym?
Yes.
Okay. So everything that's not the H building would be not being preserved?
Yeah, will be demolished.
And that's the feedback that we've gotten from the community. There were only a few people who talked about the 1928 building and that was really about the program that was in it, that it was the TV studio, that people have really good memories and said, I learned a lot here. It brought me into my current career. But that was about the program, not necessarily the space. And so the 1909 really has been the focus the whole time, the thing that people think of as Jefferson was that mess.
And within the community engagement and CPC process, sort of major, we had four options and one of the options studied did include the 1928. It was 1909 plus 1928, which is what the option was called. And it was, I think, if I'm not mistaken, one of the least favorite options of the community because it was so inefficient in what it did to the site and allowed for program-wise.
The other thing about the 1909 building is it provides a pretty elegant solution for keeping the kids on-site during construction.
Exactly.
Just for, again, for community clarity is, and maybe the dates are just for points of discussion, but do we need all those other dates or?
It's really just a diagram to say like, what's the oldest, what's the newest? And what it demonstrates is that, you know, buildings were added over a long period of time that have sort of surrounded the original building. You know, at some point, yes, we will go away from this diagram, even just in the next phase in schematic design, we'll go away from these diagrams. It's just that it's so hard for people to understand what was added when. We just really relied heavily on that to get a little clearer. But it's really not necessary to keep it going.
Okay, I was just wondering if I was missing something?
No, you're not, you're not. It's, yeah, it's too much information. Yeah.
Thank you. Yes, sir. We've been doing this presentation multiple times, shifting roles of responsibility. So there were a couple of diagrams who wanted to show you that, again, kind of in response to the community and the CPC in particular, trying to clarify kind of, in this case, what are the kind of the factors that we've been talking about that have been driving the planning process. So these kind of circles kind of represent those and they're kind of clumped together by theme. But overall, as you can imagine, you know, the top one is, you know, meeting square footage of the ed spec requirements for high schools. Another interesting one was not having travel distances longer than other modernizations because there were scenarios, options that we looked at before that actually had somewhat circuitous ways. You had to kind of make your way across the site and that obviously is not desirable. Having the simplest phasing as possible, and we'll kind of talk about that a little bit more in terms of how that minimizes impact to students and staff. Looking obviously to have existing students in new classrooms by 2026 and also with students staying on-site during construction. Having all construction by 2028. Having athletic facilities that accommodate the track and field, practice and flexible multi-use space on the south lot, and then also potential other sports uses. But obviously, you know, from our standpoint, you know, that green one kind of looking down on everything is the most important, that it really reflects community feedback and input. Go to the next. And then this is, it kind of has some similar intent, but in plan form, just to kind of ground you on so many important plan elements. So obviously, well, not obviously, one of the important things that we kind of learned through the process, talking about different scenarios, is that the track and field, which you see there in red, it was really critical that that remain in use during construction, really to allow for that continual use throughout the process of students being on-site. And that also holds for the gym, at least in terms of during construction, that is accessible, existing 1964 gym. And then as we've talked about, simplest phasing possible allows for the classrooms and administrative use to go, to minimize disruptions on those components. Obviously, with Jefferson dance program as kind of the premier or one of the premier programs within the Jefferson High School, ensuring that, well, trying to ensure that it could remain open until new dance studios are built. And that also goes along with the theater and performing arts spaces and in this case, also the surveying commons below. And with the goal ultimately of having students in the first phase of construction or the completion of the first phase by the fall of 2026. So again, just another kind of diagram to kind of demonstrate those factors. So then I'll hand it to Jeannie to talk more specifically about this 1909 scenario.
Steve, so all of this engagement analysis that we've and alumni talked about resulted in this recommended comprehensive plan layout that you see here or an idea of it, which obviously retains the original building built in 1909. This recommendation includes a full renovation of the 1909 building as well as adding new additions to the site. The approach features a courtyard at the center connecting the old and the new, adjacent, right adjacent to the commons, which is at the heart of the building. A new performing arts wing will have civic presence along Central Avenue. New state-of-the-art gym facilities will be to the west along Kirby. The overall approach shown is accomplished through a series of phasing that we will talk and share more broadly in a little bit.
Next slide.
Before you move off that slide, just to understand, so the main school entry plaza, so you'd be coming off of Commercial into an open, like, an open area and then the entrance would be in the 1909 or the new construction?
It's in the new construction. We have our entry plaza off Commercial Avenue. There'll be a secured entrance, which leads you right into the common area.
Is it off the, it's offset off the street? I just can't tell quite double the.
It is open. Oh, yeah, maybe the next slide will, I wonder if that.
There's also.
There's also.
They've been exploring.
Yeah, there's another slide.
So we'll have some more information as we get through the presentation.
So the entrance plaza is off of Commercial. It's an open area that allows community use as well throughout its use with an entrance that leads into the commons. So this proposed recommendation also has a new grandstands included as well as a field house, while the existing track and field remain functional throughout the school year and would be refurbished likely during the summer period. A key site intervention is to create a cross-block path between the 1909 building and the track and field from Commercial to Kirby that would be used outside of school hours. This addresses a city desire to break up the superwalk within the city as a way to reconnect the neighborhood. We are proposing recreating that north area between the track and 1909 building to create a universal access for the building, from the building to the field, which currently does not exist. New terrace areas will be added to capture and celebrate that experience of overlooking the field from the building.
So this would, so the city is requiring that you be able to cross the campus without going all the way around?
Yeah, that is a desire.
So there would still be a secure perimeter, but at off-hours, people shouldn't be, have to go all the way around in order to get to another street and that's what happens right now because the front of the building is sort of offset and both of the streets are offset.
They're really out of luck if you park on the right side.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
And this happens at Lincoln right now as well, that the gates open off-hours and allows the community.
But it's not like during the school day.
No, it's not during, it'll be secure during the holidays.
Back to the grandstand, is this a newer, larger, more seating grandstand? If you've been to a game there a lot of times, everyone's standing to the sides. It's just not.
No, no, seats, yeah. And it would be also, it would allow viewing of the starting line, which currently is blocked, so better view of the track and field.
From the two fields, is that a baseball and softball field or what is it?
Baseball and softball field does not fit on the site. So it is a half-practice field on the north, on the south side, that Play Field One labeled. That is a half-practice field. And then I think we are on the south block currently showing an open sports field to be discussed. That's used for as well as some parking.
Here's after the school with all the Title IX issues. Will we have, will we present with a plan that is Title IX?
Yeah, so Title IX says that you have to have, if you have a baseball field, you have to have a softball field. And we cannot fit both of them on the site and therefore we can't have either.
Well, yeah, because it's not even a regular, right now there's no playable baseball field.
Yeah.
They have a space for a field. They did it. They just haven't did it.
I'm not sure.
This area.
It's not actually by the building. It's not quite.
There's a building that currently projects into the field right now.
So they won't have, so they won't have any other athletic activities that were track and field and baseball, I mean, track and field and football.
And soccer. And on the offsite location with baseball and softball.
So this is the very real constraint of planned space and a continued shared concern around not having sufficient athletic space for all of our high schools to share. So this is not a fresh issue that's being raised here, but you're seeing on this block, there's no way you can fit it if you wanted it. And so what does that mean for access for student athletes from Jefferson? Where they're trying to work and play, where they share facilities. And that's been our conversation.
Yeah, I guess my question is, I just want to make sure that we're not ourselves into another, like, hey, there's going to be a baseball field, you know, three blocks away and softball is.
It's equally in that.
We're all hypersensitive, all of us to this.
That issue's been dragging on for a long time.
We're all well aware.
And we've looked at it lots of different ways and to have those things on there means we don't have enough room for actual building space for classrooms and all the things.
Something that I didn't mention is the, there will also be a plaza space kind of south of the grandstands there, kind of an area for game day because there is a very popular event throughout the year. That'll give some outdoor space as well that's been really, the feedback from the community has really been asking.
Yeah, so, you know, you've heard about sort of all of these themes and these narratives in the engagement work that was done and these are so important. These are all of the things that enabled us to actually create this new comprehensive plan. So I want to talk about those a little bit more in depth. But it really is going to show you, on the next slide, we'll kind of point to all these different things where they happen on the site itself. But it's to show you kind of how the building massing and site arrangement is really responding to these things that are already very important to us. So thinking about trust, really the direction to keep the 1909 did come from the Black and Brown communities in the area. And, you know, the community is not just the neighborhood. It's not geographic. There are many people who are part of the community who don't live nearby, right? That's what the CDOs were doing is they were making sure that we caught all of those folks and were able to hear from them what was important. So that's why we are keeping the 1909. The community values were really about maintaining and improving the blue track and field area because alumni, staff, parents, community all did fundraising for that. So it was really important to not take that away, move it to another location, put new buildings up where that was because they heavily invested in it. The blue track is something that visually connects them to the community and is really important. So that's why we did not take the. So that's why we did not take the track away, but we are giving them new athletic facilities over on the Kirby side and then getting a new grandstand, right? So the focus is the same as it always has been, like what you see of Jefferson as you pass it is the same, and that was really important to the community, almost as important as keeping the 1909 building. So that's why it's there. Thinking about identity, culture, and belonging, there are some things in the 1928 building that can, that sort of match what used to be on the 1909 long, long ago, before it went through many iterations of remodeling that took away all of that detail.
Before it got uglier.
It got uglier, yeah. And so we'll look to the 1928 and figure out how we can get those artifacts back into the campus somewhere so that we're still recognizing what was there without having to actually just remake the old Jefferson as it was, because that's not going to serve us since there were very few people who would not like the building as it was then. There are lots of storytelling and narrative opportunities that come from the community that can be reflected inside of the building in a lot of different ways to sort of, you know, resecure it as the significant anchor that it is. We'll have commons, community porch, entry plaza, and then all of these spaces for the partners like SEI, Latino Network, to make sure that we're still getting community members into the building. Thinking about safety, obviously, all the hazardous materials are going to come out. We'll go through a few, a full seismic upgrade for the 1909 building, and we'll have, you know, clear and secure entries and exits from the building and perimeter secure, secure perimeter as well. And then thinking about access, that's really important. There are lots of folks who have different levels of mobility. You may not be in a wheelchair, but going up those stairs in Jeff, if you have to come from the street up those stairs, the stairs are pretty tall, you know? And it really keeps a lot of people out. It makes it so that you can only go into certain places in the building. We want full access all the way through for community members and for students. And then we want to think again about what was mentioned before, that site access across so that people don't have to go all the way around the block. And these buildings are going to be two and three stories, so they're not really tall. There will be elevators everywhere so that we kind of maintain all of that access that we need to. Flexibility and change is really important, so we will be thinking about, you know, climate change. This building will be very sustainable, we'll use, you know, that will, all of the systems will be upgraded, so we'll be using really efficient MVP systems as well as, you know, woodwork, C materials, things that are locally sourced, so we're not, you know, using extra fossil fuels to transport things from far away. A lot of different ways that we can kind of keep the building sustainable and sort of flexible for the future. And then the resources, yeah, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, I was just going to ask about, you mentioned the perimeter. One of the things, when the new track was installed, one of the things that the community insisted upon was there was, it basically was that cyclone fence with barbed wire around on top. And I know some of the other newer high schools had, not the barbed wire, but cyclone fence versus, at Lincoln, they got a very beautiful designed fence, which I understand, I think is because it's in the central city that had different design standards. What are the standards that would be applied to the Jefferson?
We won't have a chain link fence, I promise you that wouldn't.
We have one at Franklin and their school, so.
We can't do that here, this is a building that has historic value, it's something that's really important to the community. We want to make sure that everything we do is better and looks like it should. And so we have not discussed the fence in detail at all, that will come way down the line after we've kind of done a lot more site work, but right now, I think where you see the cyclone fence is sort of the tennis court side, right, but there is a nice fence on the Kirby side, and so we would aim for that and better.
Oh, it's also, the, the site is in the Piedmont district, so historic district, so there are rules and guidelines that were designed.
Well, that's what I was wondering, but I mean, it used to be the entire perimeter was cyclone with barbed wire.
We don't want it to look like a prison.
Yes, well, that's what the students.
That would be a fail, yeah, yeah, we don't want to do that. But we don't have detail now, but we will have it. Thinking about resources, there's a, will be a big theater lobby and an event entry that will be really great for, you know, doing other sort of community events in that place, making a lot of room, not just for students and people who are coming directly for that event, but make it more gender, so it can be more flexible over time. New athletic spaces and main and auxiliary gym, new grandstands, fieldhouse, weight rooms, locker rooms, all of that will be in here. You know, the gym right now does have some sentimental value because of all of the wins, right? Like, this is a, you know, victory, people see that and think victory. But the locker rooms and the weight rooms and things down there, it's not, it's, it's a, it's, they're not in good shape, they're very dark, and I think it doesn't bring joy to anyone, and we really want to make a better place for athletes to thrive and have the best possible environment.
Yeah, I mean, the only things I've seen at Lincoln is how they use the old gym as part of the entryway, you know, into their facility, which I thought was pretty awesome.
Yeah, yeah.
Still got to keep the old gym floor.
Keep something in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's something we can definitely do is repurpose the gym for into the new gym or in other places, so we'll definitely be considering all those kind of things where, wherever we can save artifacts from, from the old, to bring it into the new, we'll definitely do that.
Discuss, started discussing, could we, you know, next phase engagement to include some of that discussion with the community and letting us know what's special to them and what really needs preserving so we can make sure to respect those important things smoothly. So a question of the 1909 building, is that really just the exterior? Or is it, will be like Franklin where inside is totally redone? But it seems like the outside, the same Franklin, but inside the classrooms are all modernized? Is that the model?
Yeah, it will be a full gut remodel, so everything will come out and be replaced.
Yeah, to upgrade seismically, you have to basically poke through every wall and ceiling that's in there, so it makes sense to fully gut it, but, you know, if you soften your gaze when you look at it, you'll see, you'll see Jefferson still. It'll be exact, soften your gaze and it will be. And that, you know, thinking about all of those artifacts, that's really where we're going to bring the delight and the history and the connection back. People are, it's going to be visceral, people will be like, yes, that came from another part. To really recognize it, so we want people to be delighted. And there's also opportunities to reuse and bring in the, all of that beautiful student artwork, all those really big pieces in the hallways, to bring those back into Jeff, right? But give them frames and give them the prominence that they should have, right, and the importance that they should have, because one thing you see when you go through Jeff right now is that resources aren't there, so people are using like blue painter's tape to put up all these things that are really beautiful and should have like a really beautiful display for them. So that's going to come back and be really delightful. And of course, embracing the outdoors will help, you know, outdoor courtyards for students to be in that are secure and lots of natural daylight into the classrooms. And so, Marina, if you can go to the next slide, we're just kind of looking at, again, that same view of the new comprehensive plan. And so what's important again is keeping that track and approving it, and it also helps minimize disruptions to athletics, because if we had moved it, then that means athletics has to go somewhere else for years until the new track is built. And the new track wouldn't necessarily be built in Phase One, because we'd be trying to get classrooms, right? So that is, that is how we're maintaining history and culture and respect for the community. Same with renovating the 1909, it's historical continuity. The entry plaza with the porch, and it allows the partners, community partners, to come in and have entries from the exterior so that they're really easily visible and accessible for the public who use them, for the community to use them. That central courtyard in the middle provides the access to the outdoors and a covered space, so y'all know we can't just stand out dark in the rain all year long. And then state-of-the-art performing arts wing and theater is really what the students and the programs deserve, and so we want to bring up the level of the facilities to match the level of the work, the quality of the art that the students are doing in that space. And then we were also showing a little bit of extra parking, because obviously parking's kind of limited, so.
So a quick question on the grandstand piece, I brought up the rain piece, is there any way that could be covered?
That's exactly the question I was going to ask. I know it's not in our ed specs, but it just seemed this.
It just seemed like it would make sense, you know, if it could be covered. I'm just, I just thought I'd just throw that out there. We can move on, but just.
Yeah, we'll, that, we'll put that on the table. We haven't discussed in detail, but we'll put it on the table.
I don't think you'll get too many oppositions on that.
Yeah.
It seems like none of the other schools have it, but it seems like, I don't know why we incorporated, maybe just like a, you know, value engineer to out, but it seems like it totally.
Yeah, why hasn't another high school has that, Keen?
Well, I guess like that would be like what's the.
It's a trade-off.
It's a trade-off.
And how much, how much is?
Julie, go write a check.
We've had regular conversations. It is often one of the things that, that people want, that it's above and beyond the ed specs, and so most of the time what we're dealing with in value engineering is making sure we don't lose anything within the ed specs and instead not keeping the things that are above and beyond, right, so we're ensuring that we maintain the base level. And we have been doing value engineering for all of our projects to date.
How to stop it.
I'm actually, I'm actually not, because it seems like it would be worth knowing just like what the cost differential is, because I do think you potentially could get other space. As a parent who sat through 12 years, three seasons in the rain.
I'm sure it will be an ongoing conversation as we work our way through design.
All right, let's keep it going.
Okay. Next slide.
Alrighty, so these next few slides break down the phasing for the project. So this is the current school site plan. So the initial impact to the site is very low. It would just be for athletics to shift practices from the south practice field to the practice field across the street so that we could demo the auto building and do construction staging and begin construction in that area. But baseball would not be accessible once construction begins. Next slide. So then as we actually begin Phase One construction, as we mentioned, students would remain in the current building for their classes, and almost all of the actual current program would remain functional and operational throughout Phase One. As I mentioned, the only demo would be that auto shop building. We would make room for a new complex that would include enough classrooms for, at minimum, the current enrollment and the performing arts theater, new performing arts theater and associated supporting studio spaces as well as the survey and the commons. We would also build a new grandstand this phase and refurbish the track and field in this phase as well and have the main gym functional until the new gyms are complete. Next slide. For Phase Two, we would then be moving students out of the 1909 building and into the new construction completed in white. Then we would demolish and abate the remaining buildings, well, demolish the remaining buildings between 1909 and the new construction, and then begin demo and abatement of the 1909 and renovation of 1909 building. And then also constructing new connecting spaces that would bridge the new and the old, which would include perhaps new larger commons, additional classrooms, admin spaces, and two new gyms would go where that large yellow rectangle is. In this scheme, we envision creating a much better connection for athletics, being that they'll have these fields that are sort of, oops, spread throughout the site. The west side of the, of the ground floor would create a good connection from north to south with the gyms as the central sort of node. And, yeah, next slide.
Before you move on, I know these are just conceptual kinds and it's further down in the design process, but today when you stand in Alberta and you look north, to say there's no curb appeal, there's big blocks, and I don't think we want to recreate that. I don't, I'm just curious if in the community conversations, there was any discussion about how to tie in sort of the historic colonnades of the 1909 facade with some of these more modern or padded sections that there's some tie-in, we don't just recreate the cubes.
Yeah. Definitely lots of conversations about, you know, how the new relates to the, to the old 1909 and what the expressions are there and finding a way to connect them. The other thing I would say is that we also have been organizing dance and theater rooms along the street so that there's some activity and liveliness to that from, from that view. So the theater you can kind of see is tucked up in the middle so that like walls are, are. Those activities on the street.
So these diagrams present a first look at the potential interior organization of the new Jefferson High School. The first floor would contain mostly all admin and public facing spaces. As we mentioned, the main entry would be off of Commercial into that entry plaza, and you would also access the theater from Commercial as well. And you would move through the building from that main entry through central commons off of the main gym, past the commons, which you would be able to access the gyms from Kirby. The original building to the north would house athletics, as we mentioned, and also, as we mentioned, there would be a potential reworking of the existing main stair to provide a main access point to the track and field at the ground level. The second floor would allow visibility down to the commons and interior courtyard below. Also houses the media center in the old 1909 building. And, yeah, it just provides, gives you that central sort of commons and interior courtyard kind of plan approach, as you can see. Next slide. The third and fourth floor right now, you know, also, all of this is in flux, you know? These are just diagrams at this point, but what these diagrams do express is how we're wrapping all the buildings with light, you know? The green, as you see indicated there, were potential green roofs that students would be moving from construction spaces, and every classroom has light, which is very important for community feedback. Next slide.
Thank you. Now we're going to talk about space program. This slide shows our early programming work. 2019 conceptual master plan study completed prior to the 2020 bond recommended that Jefferson adopt the 2017 ed specs with additional space in several key areas. One, creating a theater for 1,000 patrons rather than the 500, which is in the standard theater size and the ed spec, and it's the current theater size they have now, as well as significant added support space for the acclaimed dance program, which is what generated the desire for the larger theater. We also need to accommodate additional space beyond ed spec for Jefferson's robust community partnerships with organizations such as SEI, PCC, and Latino Network. To finalize square footage area, programming meetings with various stakeholders have been ongoing since July and will continue into the SD and design development phases next year. These meetings have included district leadership, Jefferson staff, district staff, as well as weekly meetings now with Principal Drake, now that he is, Principal Drake Shelton, now that he is on site and ready to meet. We have been meeting with him once a week to go over the emerging space program.
Can I ask a question about the space? So by expanding the performance arts space and the dance space, are they trading off, they're getting lots of something else? So it's just, it's only additive?
It's ed spec plus.
Ed spec plus.
And then the technical space is, meets the ed specs, and so if you were a student at Jefferson versus a student at Franklin or Lincoln, you're going to have the same, it may be different, program differently, but it's going to be an equal amount of space?
It's, we are currently holding ed spec square footage of those spaces.
Then my other question would be. Then my other question would be utilization of the classroom. So if the if there there were 1,700 students at Jefferson, what would the classroom utilization rate be?
That is a great.
I don't think there's a short answer to that question because it.
Is it like, is it a short answer?
There is not.
Okay, I was gonna say.
Because it often, because everyone, even if their enrollment is almost the same, will be different because of the programs that they offer. So a little bit will be dependent on what programs are offered when they get to 1,700 students. And we can kind of give a range, but it's hard to be precise.
So I mean, we, you know, if you've got X number of students and they've got eight classes or 100% have eight classes, you know, we have a projected whether what the utilization would be. I know we did that for.
Yeah, the ed spec makes the ed spec makes base assumptions about utilization, but all schools deviate from the ed spec. Therefore, to say this school is going to be, if it adds 900 students, is just is tougher to predict. I mean, I think we could, we could give an estimate based upon a rather high school in their utilization, but it's hard to be precise about it.
Yeah, I mean, I still continuing to hear from Franklin staff and students, just about. And I know they're over 700 students, but just the way it was built versus, or maybe it's how they got programmed. Compared to Grant, even though they have similar number of students, it's utilization is much higher at Franklin versus Grant, which say causes a lot of issues for staff.
Yeah, I think it's fair for us to take a look at that. I don't, again, there's, there's lots of variables, so it's hard to, especially at fingertips, to take a look at that. But we do have utilization data, certainly at our existing schools. It's just hard to predict something in the future, but we can give some level of information. And I think it's also fair to say ed specs have changed over time from when Franklin was built to where we are now.
So you can see in the ed specs, you know, there's three nice general classrooms, but there's more than double performing arts spaces. There's an extra, I think it's a CTV space. And so if that's the ed spec and it's greater than what you see in the other high schools, they'll have the same issues programmatically schedule wise, but it won't be for lack of meeting spec.
What is the issue in racing is like at Franklin, they met the specs, but it it meant that crazy things were happening inside the building. People really were on top of each other. I mean, just.
And a need to share classrooms.
Was it as compared though to whatever happened at Grant, how it got programmed?
In Grant, off the top of my head, I think there are over 1,900 students. They've had to expand their usage space as well. So I think it's, it's always a challenge to get to an apples and apples when looking at utilization programming, which isn't to say that we can't provide some of the information.
And I think we all want to make sure the campus has some breathing. We're saying, we're maxed out, but there's just no, the correct discussion program.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. This one shows comparatively where Jefferson, what Jefferson looks like compared to the other modernizations. When we compare their program to the other modernized high schools and the education specification, you'll see that Jefferson is slightly larger, as discussed before. This is primarily because of the larger theater and studios and partner spaces I just mentioned. The chart on the left shows a simple comparison of the net area of each school. And Jefferson is shown in the blue. And just below is the 2017 ed spec. The chart on the right shows the same information, but with a little bit more detail, showing the six primary components of the space program. The program includes classrooms, science labs, and so on, fine and performing arts and PE. And those are self explanatory. Education support includes areas like administrative program and backup house spaces. And finally, we also show the partner and community uses and the wraparound services. Jefferson is the second bar on the left, from the left. And you can see that the red section is slightly or is significantly larger than any of the other high schools or the education specification. And this is the fine and performing arts section, which we mentioned before, and reflects Jefferson's larger theater and its unit dance studios.
So it's fair to say this campus will have most of the square footage of any one of our comprehensive high schools. And at least let's say today, the smallest enrollment.
That's fair.
Yeah. Just want to state the obvious.
So is there, is there a long term plan to marry the enrollment balancing with the opening of high school?
I mean, we're all, we're all sort of aligned and we need to think about what that needs to look like. Haven't haven't sketched out, what does a balancing process look like for the space now? But we're going to need to start thinking about that because I don't think we want to build it and not provide the opportunity to be used, which of course creates breathing or other comprehensive high schools.
And it's also, it was just worth noting, I wish I had the numbers, but you know, a year, two or three out from when we complete a modernization, enrollment prior to modernization is always significantly higher. And you know, it could be a third or 40% or more in some of our schools.
Right, it's just that.
It's hard to predict that.
The only one that doesn't have to be required, that has all the enrollment boundaries.
So it's got, it's got that unique opportunity where people can say, I want to go there. Versus when you see there is a boundary and it's catching more students. You can now catch more students and have more choice to go to Jefferson.
Leave it to Spencer.
I mean, the school is already asking us, like, if they go out to middle schools, they want a slide on the modernization as they start to talk to the theater school.
Great. Great. So I'll just quickly go through a few schedules to kind of give you a perspective of where we are and where we're going. This is kind of just the high level overview, really starting all the way back pre-bond in 2019 and through kind of the end of the project. But obviously, project began in 2019 when we first engaged with the community as part of the conceptual master planning process. That helped us develop the scope, schedule, and budget for the Jefferson modernization project on the 2020 bond. And you can see kind of with the marker there, almost towards the center, we're at the end of our planning phase and about to begin the design process. And so we're preparing to obviously present the comprehensive plan to the board for approval. And that really also marks, kind of see that demarcation between planning, design. It marks the beginning of design, which will last until 2024, past it, but at least the first phase in terms of the beginning of construction for the first phase of the project. And then obviously throughout it all, we'll continue, as we've talked about, to ask community for input and feedback. And we'll also obviously provide progress updates along the way. Slide. Oh, yeah.
This is a overarching question. The MPG and Benson open when?
Fall of 2024.
Fall of 2024.
Is that it? Okay, yeah, next. I won't go into this in too much detail, but it just gives you a sense of the level of in some ways, the complexity and the phasing of the work that we will be embarking on with both design and construction. As we've talked about, we'll deliver the project in two phases. That necessitates two sets of construction document packages and coordinating cross sets of permitting and value engineering processes. We have a condensed schedule. You can see it in particular in terms of our first phase of design, schematic design. And then we kind of extend out in terms of the two phases of of design to allow us to have our projected construction start in 2024, our phase one completion and our project completion date. So that's kind of what all of this accomplishes. And again, working closely with the design team on this. I'd go to the next slide. And then I just kind of a high level milestone overview. Obviously, we've just completed planning, will be submitting to the board, and then moving into schematic design early next year. And design development and construction documents will follow. And then starting in, starting in May, and then we project students moving into the new phase one module in the summer of 2026 and fall of 26, and with overall project completion by the summer of 2028.
And then Marina did one slide. So you'll see that we have provided you a slide with cost estimate. There are no numbers on this draft presentation, all the numbers on the final presentation that comes to you tomorrow, or whenever it is the board office sends back to you, to the board members. But we wanted to give you an understanding of the, how we typically lay out the cost estimate for our comprehensive plans. This is consistent with how we've laid out in the past. And we also just wanted to clarify that we are still working on the cost estimate. We received two cost estimates for the construction cost. They're very different. And so we were in the process of reconciling those two estimates. They're the biggest component of the project cost, obviously. So it's important that we understand why they're so different and what the assumptions are behind them. We're going to be providing an updated project cost number. And I think, you know, I can give you a little bit of a preview on that, which is to say, you've probably noticed we've had a pandemic and inflation has been out of control. So when we first started doing the estimated for the bond measure, that was in February of 2020. And that date probably rings a bell to folks. At the time, we went through a pretty significant effort to identify what assumptions we should be making for escalation in the future, in particular for Jefferson for the next six years. We went out to three professional cost estimators within the city of Portland and asked them to provide us with their, you know, numbers on what that would look like for the next six years. And one of them refused to give us six years' worth because it was so volatile. They really were uncomfortable with it. And the other two, all three of them were in fact quite different from each other. They all had very different feelings about what might be coming as we were moving into a pandemic. And so we took those numbers, we ran them through our bond accountability committee. We have a lot of conversations about them. We came up with numbers to be used for the bond measure. The reality is that inflation over the last two and a half years has far exceeded anything that we anticipated in escalation. And so we want to be able to provide you with an understanding of the difference between what we had and what has actually happened to get you to numbers where they would be today. Right? So try to kind of get you an understanding of the difference in those numbers. So that is information we are going to provide in the presentation for the board meeting in December. We are still pulling together the data to do that.
Okay, so with those numbers, I know they're going to be different. Can you provide on like how we plan on making up that difference?
We're going to talk about that too. In fact, we'll make that part of the presentation as well. And you know, again, preview, I think it's safe to say we have a fairly healthy program contingency in the 2020 bond. We've talked about this before. We don't have the same risk with the 2020 program that we did with, say, the 2017 program. So we were having conversations about Benson, you know, several months ago. We talked a little bit about the health of the bond program contingency and what it is intended to be used for and what risks we see against the contingency. We'll revisit that conversation in the context of this.
So when it comes to the board, are we going to be approving the budget?
I, I'm going to kind of leave that.
Is that, is it, I'm just thinking, so this is great, getting a preview. If we are getting the budget at the same meeting, we're going to be asked to vote on it? Is that?
Not unusual. We've done this before.
Well, just given our history, that's, I mean, of what happened with the 2017 bond, I'm just.
So, you know, I think historically, and Dan can probably correct me here, but historically, I don't think we've necessarily required board approval to use program contingency funds. However, we certainly want you to be on board with that. It's not a requirement that you. If we have the funds, we're going to say this is how we think we can pay for this. But the the cost numbers that we're getting in are the cost numbers that we're getting in. And I can, I can say very closely aligned to the ed spec and to the conceptual master plan, we have not deviated from square footage that we laid out at the conceptual in 2019. Really, the biggest change in cost has been inflation. So that is not something we have a lot of control over. We will provide the materials as as early as possible so that we don't have inflation ahead of me.
Operationally, the master plan aligns the scope, the schedule, the budget. The budget, and every project changes and often changes. It can change directly or it can change a little bit as we can get a grant. And so we'll change the budget or or it could be, you know, small changes. That we don't ask the board for approval. The master plan, we want to show this is how these three components of the project align. Really, what we're looking for the board to approve is the programming. We have an ed spec. Every project deviates from that, both up and down. Here's how this project deviates so that the board understands that. And then the overall schedule, here's what the schedule is. And so if there is any significant deviation really from that programming, that's when we come back to the board and say, we anticipated having this program, this, these spaces, those are changed significantly, that's when we come back.
And contingency, program contingency is intended to cover cost number ones of the projects that are in that measure. Yeah, is the intent of the contingency. And maybe this, maybe this is unnecessary, but it sounded like there are a lot of caveats that we, that it will be. What I heard is like, it's probably going to be a significantly higher number. And so I guess my overarching, maybe a springtime question is, for example, earlier this year, we had, we approved materials which were also paid for from the bond. And because it was over budget, we used operating dollars to pay for that, which from my perspective, we shouldn't.
My books with operation.
Correct, because our most precious resource are discretionary operating dollars. So for example.
I would say we haven't, we haven't on a cycle used our general fund to replenish instructional materials. So we're trying to make it up.
Yeah, so I, I think I, what we sold to the voters was like, here's, here are the things we're going to do and the bond's going to pay for it. So again, this is more of a overarching using our, using our bond fund. So we're not dipping into the operational dollars for things that we said we're going to pay for. I guess, so maybe the board doesn't have to approve the contingency, but if we're paying for other things that should be paid for by the bond, which is what we told voters that we're using general fund, then it seems like there should be a truup.
My open understanding of the use of general fund for curriculum materials was for materials that were not compensable and then on the range. So certain things like professional development is not considered a compensable expense, but it's required in order to implement the curriculum.
I can look up for you the, you know what I had from Alberto when I asked that question? Because it looked like, it looks like there's 70, and we don't need to go down this. But I'm concerned if we're going to be voting on it on Tuesday. But I'm concerned if we're going to be voting on it on Tuesday and it's significantly more and it's like, hey, we're just going to take out the contingency and then that takes away money from something else that we. But the curriculum budget is 70 million and we think we allocated only 25. We can follow up later, but if, I would like to understand this. What we told voters what they're going to get is.
Sure.
They get what we told them they were.
Cost estimates, right. I think what I'm hearing you say is a concern around making sure we stay with the parameters.
And deliver everything that we told voters they're going to get.
I'd love to know more because it sounds like there's maybe a misunderstanding. I mean, I'm not aware that curriculum has overshot their budget. As the bond budget, I would expect them to have a conversation with me as well to see if there were permanent contingency funds.
Okay, we do, so I'd like to, thank you for letting.
All right, we got three minutes. All right, anything else?
That's three minutes.
That's definitely not three minutes, going through the program.
Yep.
But you have the information of it.
The following slides are a detailed breakdown of the program.
Could you, three font.
Have more questions?
You know, these slides are effectively the much more detailed versions of the graphs that we saw before. Those graphs gave a little bit of the detailed breakdown. This is the minutia.
And these will be in the report as well.
And is basically to say that we need all the ed spec requirements?
Yes.
Okay.
And when it shows, because every, every school is going to have, some things are going to be over, some things are going to be below, but they're going, they're going to net out. In this case, there's a positive, but we want to be very specific of where those pluses and minuses are.
Is that what the, what's the gray highlighting? Is that something of importance?
Is gray referred?
Double check that. Gray might have been what was important to us. Might not be.
Just whatever, whatever that is.
I'll leave this on, because some of them are like subtotals.
Well, it's, yeah, I can't tell what.
Or some of it were items that we were, are not in ed spec or added.
Yeah, I think they're, I think they're revisions or additions.
Right. Oh, thank you.
Anyway, it'd be helpful to know, if it means anything to know what that means.
We will make sure that we.
Footnote or something.
Put a footnote in there.
And because I can't see it in here, is there a teen parent center and a health center like our other?
Yes. So, late breaking, gray is optional in the ed spec.
The gray is optional.
Online viewer, knowledgeable online viewer has alerted me.
It's our, this architectural team is watching virtually.
All right, do you have any further comments? Any other questions, comments, concerns?
I just have one question. I think to a few of the Jefferson meetings, which I create, there's a discussion about vendor selection and making sure that there's representative vendors selected for this project. And I just was wondering what the plan is of that. There's actually a goal to make sure that there's unrepresented vendors actually selected for this project.
We'll do a very fast version of that, a much larger conversation. In short, yes, there's, there's board policy about certified businesses and WSB certified businesses. There are administrative directives that provide directions to staff and we have goals as well. We operationalize how we achieve those goals in a multitude of ways. The way that we advertise, the way that we promote participation in awards, the way that we promote these firms winning awards and the promotion of them being successful on the contracts when they have those. We use an alternative contracting process called CMGC, which you might be aware of, that allows us to use levers that we don't have in normal contracting to be able to provide some preference to bringing those firms on board. So that's kind of like the big, big, lots of detail, isn't it?
And we have a new certified business manager in Olsend who's very active in the minority business community.
Right. And this seems like a particular. You know, it's really, really important to the community, but I feel like.
All right, any other questions, comments?
Thank you for allowing us to do the full presentation.
Yes, yes, no, I wanted to make sure we got that done because I was so bad at the last one, so. Awesome, awesome.
I think that team that's watching somewhere.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Exciting.